In our packets of March Business Managers Reports, anything there you'd like to highlight Shannon?
Um. I'll just, well, I'll, I think the science floor is later on, so I'll wait to visit with that on, when we get to that in the agenda. But. No, I think. The only other thing is, since I have written this up, I sent another, another family or another balance to the collection agency for hot lunch. Other than that, it. Still just working.
Okay. Any questions? Is there a motion to accept the Business Manager's Report? I'll make a motion. Dave moves to accept the Business Manager's Report, is there a second?
Oh, sorry.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed say no, motion passes. Move on to financial reports, which congratulations Shannon, we are, we are up to date. The February, the February financial reports are in our packet, thank you for that. And. Clearly you've made great strides, so that's good to know. I hope everyone had an opportunity to review and ask questions if they desire. Is there a motion to approve the February financial reports? Discuss after that. I make a motion, they go most to approve the February financial reports, is there a second? Second, Dave seconds. Anything you would like to highlight Shannon?
Um, yeah, there's, you know, as, as each month, as I get more comfortable with the reports and the process. So this month I, I had, I had time to dig into this balance sheet, which has been kind of a little thorn in my saddle a little bit. And I, I struggled with the liabilities because I didn't think they were accurate. But I do believe they are, I have gotten them. Very accurate reporting as of February of twenty-eight. So each, and so of course each fund has their own liability. And so that's what my, my focus was on this month. Of course, the cash, I can tie that out, that I, that's fine. The buildings and the equipment, that I think is, is, is pretty accurate. The only other things that I'm going to start tackling then are the other assets. And I've been in contact with the auditor on, on some of the things on regarding that. And so hopefully in the next couple of months, I'll be able to. Kind of tie those up a little bit or make sure that I agree wholeheartedly with them as, so. Rest of it with the grant, the grant income and. Just it's, it's, it's regulated by DPI a little bit or a lot. And so just getting more accustomed to how they want it. And then another way on, on how it's easier for me to understand and for me to read and kind of how my OCD pick kicks in. So it's still a little bit of a work in progress, but being caught up relieves a lot of stress. So it's a little more fun to pick apart and, and kind of. Make it my own, I guess.
Thank you, any questions board members? I watched part of the, one of the. School Boards Association Finance Board Member Training, Board Member Administrator Training. And I, I think my, my takeaway from that was I, I, as, as Shannon gets more comfortable, I think that I would like to see much more condensed summarized reports rather than so much detail. But other school board members might feel differently and want to see more detail, but. Some of it's overwhelming when you see, I tell you scroll through about twenty pages, you're done. But it's comforting to know that our business manager is getting more comfortable with the software and with the data, the reports. And as we move forward, please don't be afraid to ask for different information. And. Take our. Make our jobs easier, more efficient and help us to focus on student achievement. Any other questions or comments? So next month, are you, what do you think about me moving reports and financial reports up the agenda? Are you ready for that or not? I think so. Okay, okay, I do have a question, it's not related to the February reports, but how is the audit coming? Are we gonna have one soon?
Uh, yes, he, he just emailed me, I believe it was last week and said he was gonna have to bow out today's meeting, which probably is best since I'm not there either. And he's hoping for the April eleventh to be able to have it tied up and come into the board meeting and present the audit findings.
And then does he have to start the next one right away?
Correct. And that one will be just a single audit because this, it'll be, it'll be twenty-one, twenty-two. And that again is because our federal grants were over, I think it was seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
And will we have that again this fiscal year?
Most likely, yeah, because we had S R of five hundred and five hundred thousand. And he said, most, most of the small schools that never used to make that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar threshold. With S R funds, it's pushing a lot of schools over and they're having to go to single year audits.
So the audits that are underway, again, I think I ask this every month, are for what years? It's two years?
Yep, it's nineteen twenty and twenty twenty-one.
Okay. And we are already in two years past that, so just so everybody public notes too, we're behind because of an issue with our previous auditor and not getting things to the state the way he was supposed to. It's not like we were pushing it off. No, 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 but I don't, it's not unusual that audits are. This is maybe a little unusual, but. But even the issue with the auditor, he hadn't even got started on our audit before we transferred to someone else. But there are so few auditors available that are still backlogged, that that's, that's really causing people to lag, right? And that, yes. People have others. All right, any other questions or comments? Now, I believe we have a motion on the floor to approve the financial reports. All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed say no. Motion passes, financial reports, all right. Moving on to letter C, item one, Facilities Committee Reports. We have, of course, starting a practice of having a committee meeting minutes in the, in our, on our agenda or in our packet. They do not need to be approved, you know.
Just if you need any edits, just let Shannon know, she'll.
So the facilities committee did meet on February twenty-first and that was in conjunction with the bid opening, correct?
Yes.
Okay, for the science floor and, but we act on that in our session. Okay, so minutes are in your packet for your review. You want to speak to ICS vision?
So ICS will be here at nine o'clock, hopefully Robert's gonna be there, Dave, Reed, myself, they're, they will come and they'll have a presentation. So if any other board members want to come. Then they would, then I believe we're gonna take a walk around and they're gonna look at our facilities and. So we'll just see what they have to say. Yeah.
Okay, then the science floor insurance update, I believe that's Shannon, you've been working on that?
Yes, so I, I threw it out there on the listserv on if anybody had had. Oh, some building issues and what, you know, the insurance reserve fund. And I received, or I got an email from an individual in a different school district and he said, go ahead. He gave me the name of, of a gentleman at North Dakota Insurance Reserve. So I visited with him and kind of explained the situation of, of the science floor. And he, he was most adamant that most definitely that would be something that OPS should file a claim for. He didn't guarantee any monies, but he said, at least you should have the claim filed. So went ahead and the first step was to file it with our agency at Western Agency or agent at Western Agency, which I did. And then she forwarded that right on to the North Dakota Insurance Reserve Fund. And I think less than twenty-four hours after that happened, I got a email and a phone call from an underwriter at the Insurance Reserve Fund wanting information on what exactly was wrong with the science floor. So I, I had, for, I was able to, I got the letters and the information from Anna. And it was on Mr. Sandman's report on each floor and each percentage of deflection or degree of deflection. So I forwarded that on to him and then he wanted to know exactly what we were going to fix. So. We, I sent him like the blueprints and some other. Papers that. Michael J. Burns Architect Firm had sent out, so I'm, and so I sent that to him and I said, if you need anything else, let me know. And he said, that was good and that was the last I've heard. So it is in progress of, of at least the underwriters looking at it.
Very good, questions? If not, negotiations. Our committee. Has met twice, February thirteenth and March second. We've agreed to our own rules, the notes from that, those meanings are in packet. Our next meeting is scheduled to be April fourth. Moving on then, school policy, nothing to act on this month, but Anna has placed three policies in our packet. Related to the agenda, which we are continuing to make adjustments to our agenda, so we will likely work to. Amend that policy probably going into the next school year, that's what I was saying, like the summer. Public participation at board meetings, I think was included just because it was a topic that came up at, at the training. I didn't sense any desire to change our policy. And then highlighting stu, uh, policy G A B D A, student achievement, which is the one that we are clearly and. Clearly addressing by our definition of our goals. This is the, clearly the responsibility of the board to establish and promote a clear vision of student achievement as the top priority of the district, so I think that we are doing. Okay, any questions on those policies, reactions? If not, we'll move on to Superintendent Evaluation, thank you all for giving your. Evaluation forms to me, I compiled them, I sent them back out for your review. And I have reviewed them with Mrs. Self. According to policy, we are not to. We are not to complete a, an overall rating, but we are to complete a rating of satisfactory or unsatisfactory in each of the ten domains that are listed, and I'll read them, they are relationship with the board, recruitment and retention of staff, supervision of licensed and non-licensed staff, identification and implementation of board policy needs, financial management skills, educational leadership, relationship with students and parents, relationship with community, effective records management and supervision of buildings, grounds, transportation and safety. Would any board member want to pull any one or more of those out for individual discussion and rating? All board members rated Mrs. Self satisfactory in each of those ten performance areas. I, I would like to have a little bit of discussion, but I would entertain a motion for the board to approve a satisfactory rating for Mrs. Self in all ten separate. Rating performance areas, is there such a motion?
I will make that motion.
For most, is there a second? A second, Nagel seconds. All of the comments that were made and the ratings that were made. The ratings and the comments were all compiled and listed, were there anything, was, was there anything that stood out to anyone? Anything that you would like to highlight in your own comments and thoughts? I would say that. Financial management skills are. Seem to be the lowest rated and. It's, I, I don't think it's because we, I don't think it's because I don't think Mrs. Self can do those things. We're just not, but we, you know, turnover involved Superintendent and Business Manager not being through an entire budget cycle. I'm, I'm pleased with the progress that both Mrs. Self and Ms. Jefferson are making and. It's hard to rate some of those, we haven't totally seen them, you know. Anything that stood out to you?
I know, I totally agree with the financial management piece of it, just, we haven't had the chance, we're starting, it's a little bit scary for me thinking this. Shannon, Shannon and I both agree that we've got our lane, we start talking curriculum, she said her eyes bleed over and we're doing all the finance stuff like, oh boy. Even though I know I need to get to know that piece of it, but we'll get there, planning for negotiations, planning for the budgeting, but it's just.
Very world right now, but. So when, when I saw the West Ed. Report a day or two ago, I thought that was a little bit revealing in, in terms of your goals of transparency and two-way communication. Just a few items on that that seem to stand out to say, no, there's still work to be done in communicating. Maybe more, more standards-based grading than personalized learning. With the public and the rationale, the benefits on those. And then remembering that we will never please everybody, but. Any other thoughts, comments that anyone would like to highlight? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Then mind buck, this absolute not voting, Dave? Yes. Thor?
Yes.
Nagel?
Yes.
Neil votes, yes, Superintendent's evaluation is approved for the girl with mind buck absence and not voting, thank you. And keep up the good work, we're glad we have you. Uh, next calendar changes.
Uh, okay, remember last month when I said that, I hope that's the last one I've got to bring to you, well, here we are again.
We made it through.
Yeah, we did, we did, right? And so I just have to add in those stormy, so any changes in our calendar you have to approve. So I'll just kind of do it by a month by month if we need to. So added in the storm days on February twenty-second and twenty-third and added in on the storm day on March first. That, it, it just needs to be approved by you, since I have those changes.
All right, is there a motion to approve those changes to the school calendar, the twenty-two, twenty-three calendar? I'll make a motion, Dave makes that motion, is there a second?
Second.
Or seconds, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed say no. Motion passes, just aside now, no, shout out to those bus drivers, because what a miserable time.
Was it, yeah, Friday, I think, I got there to the bus barn at about like six twenty-five to six thirty and I brought him a dozen donuts. I'm like, I don't know what I'm writing for you guys, but thank you so much, just for, or making sure that. And out, the family, he sent them an email saying, please, just let us know if your roads are passable, because we're gonna have school. As long as there's not storm warnings or the roads are passing, you know, are not, no travel advised. Just let us know, because we had like two buses stuck in one day where I just really feel like some responsibility can go on. The families are saying, okay, I live in the country, I need to make sure my road is passable instead of just waiting for our bus to get stuck.
Or, or if it's not fit for us, you're right, you know, you can give them to a different spot.
Yeah, plus, yeah. And that's what we're doing now, but the families were very good after I sent out calling and saying, okay, don't come down our road, we'll get them here or we'll figure out how to get them in town. Farmers have been great, I, a farmer from over north of us by Lisbon School District, Gwinnett School District. I don't even know who the farmer was because he didn't leave his name and he just helped us get out, just because we were stuck. So people are very kind about that stuff. And overall, our people that live in the country are awesome about telling us and getting out, you know, it's just that we just needed that little extra help and reminder that we need the help.
Bring us coming and the roads will be light. All right, thank you. That spotlight, we're gonna make you come up here and we'll get a, we'll get the volume for you.
Send everybody an email too, with the, I'm kind of a colleague, I guess. There's some, if anybody wants.
Do you want this?
I don't know if you can share it on your screen or not, I'm not doing it.
I'm gonna have to leave and run to my class.
Did you send it to me, Owen?
Yeah, I sent it to everybody in the room.
Thank you Shannon, I trust that you'll be able to create minutes for the rest of the meeting from the recording.
Yes, yep. I will, thank you.
Have a good day.
Yeah, I think this turns off recording when we're screen mirroring, but that's okay, we'll just, just remind you to turn it back on, please. Okay.
Yeah.
Do I go from here or no?
Yeah, you can just go full screen and I can just tell you when to flip it, that's fine. Because if you go full, at the end, that is. Um, when I asked me to present. To tell you the truth, I didn't know exactly what I was gonna present on right away. Um, but I went back to some of the classes I've created. There's precedents in North Dakota to, I, I have a lot of things on my teaching license that I can do. And some unique classes that I can teach and two of them are North Dakota Studies to the high school kids and Law and Justice, and Law and Justice is probably the class I'm most confident in that I teach because of the unique way we go about things in Law and Justice. And this year I've taken on North Dakota Studies in the high school. It all kind of started, you can go to the, go to the next slide, it all kind of started. I think we converted over to Flex Mod for a few years in twenty seventeen, if I remember. Remember the right time then, um. And when we converted over to Flex Mod, Mr. Beta came up to me because we were having a problem. Because we're getting thirty-five kids, forty kids in our other high school social studies classes. And he asked me, hey, what else would you like to teach, what would you want to do? And I can, I, I looked at my teaching credentials and I looked and I looked and I looked and I thought, hey, a law class would be kind of neat without any curriculum, without any resources, without really anything. So it was created from the ground up by me in twenty seventeen. And over the years, one of the things I wanted to do in the Law and Justice side was get a bunch of speakers and people that actually have experience in the law side into my classroom, including Rhonda. And one of the reasons I brought those people in is because, one, I'm teaching it and I wanted to have some of those real life experiences. And, and we've had different speakers over the years, but we've had some, we've had some consistency with like Rhonda. Um, has been in, Alex Breitbart was one of the first people I contacted and he comes in yearly. He's been, he's been a real fun speaker for the kids. And as he said, is from his first year to now, he is, he's gotten to be a better speaker. So he's been, he's been really fun and it's been, it's been neat to, to have some of those speakers in. And overall, I get a lot of feedback from my kids and they really, really enjoy Law and Justice. So like I said, just some background with that, from about twenty seventeen to now, the, the way that class has developed. And then this year. We've had it where it's been one semester for three days a week. I think last year I was all the way up to teaching the class every day for a full year and I went to Mr. Beta and went. Um, that's probably, there's just not enough content that I have to teach that for a full year. So I asked him if we could do one semester and then I had to find another class to complement or to complement Law and Justice for an elective, social studies elective, and I chose North Dakota Studies. So I'm on an adventure with North Dakota Studies in my nineteenth year of teaching, but my first year teaching it to the high school. I teach it to, I teach it to the eighth grade, but trying to take some of that content from the eighth grade and up it to the high school. That's where I'm at right now with that, you can change the slide. Oh, in the background of that last slide, that was one of our speakers we had in, that was Justice John Jensen, who is on the North Dakota Supreme Court, and he came in a few years back. So here's some pictures that I've had of some of the speakers in Law and Justice. You can see kind of in the top right, probably one of, I think this was the first year we did it, probably one of the most, that one, yep. One of the most rewarding times we've had, because we had Mr. Beta, Mr. Sizzler and Officer O'Brien come in. And my kids always have questions, they ask questions on law at the state and national level. But one of the biggest things they ask is at the school level, like what are their rights? And I, I advocate from seventh grade on, know what you can and can't do, advocate for yourself. We talk about it constantly in every class I teach. And it was really neat to get Mr. Beta and Officer Sizzler and Officer O'Brien in the class, because kids got to ask questions. Why can lockers be searched? Why can, what are, what are my rules when talking about vehicles? What are my rights when we talk about policy in the school? And they spent a whole day, I think we could have spent a week talking about all this. And it all boiled down to many of them, they wanted to know about tenant windows, they wanted to know about exhaust, that, you know, things that, that they were concerned about and that were important to them. And what, it was one of the more rewarding experiences they have had and they, they talked about it for days and it was kind of neat to have them in. Top left. That is Judge Narum, who's came, he's been one of my consistent speakers, he's great. He comes in and talks about Southeast District Court and the kids always ask him questions like, what is your most difficult case? Things like that, right in the middle there was a pretty unique story. I think it was last year, Mr. Beta came in with two police officers into my room and goes, can we, can we see you for a second? And I didn't know what I did. Asked me to come out in the hallway, well, one of the officers for the North Dakota Iowa Patrol is one of my cousins up in Fargo, Chris Elgo, who is actually, I think, the North Dakota Officer of the Year this year. So, um, he came in and I asked him to come back, because what they were doing is they were doing a, a search of the school with their dogs. And I texted him, asked him to come back and he not only came back with his dog, he came back with a bloodhound, which is one of two in North Dakota. And one of the cool things is we went outside, it was November, as you can see, snow on the ground. And he asked one of our students to basically give him his hat and start running. And the dog tracked him down out by the football practice field and the kids had a lot of fun with that. Just a couple other highlights, Alex is in the bottom right. And I think Rhonda Faraway is in the, in the bottom left there. So I appreciate all my speakers that are coming, you can flip it in like. And then some of the topics I want to talk about, the one picture, that was a blood lab we did, that is not real blood. We got a formula to mix it in and I was storing in the back of my room and I had some questions about that. But it is not real blood, we found a, we found a formula to do it and the kids got to do some testing on it if it would. Collagulate versus not and how they worked it out. And then one of the highlights of our class, what kind of the culmination is in the top right is we do a mock trial. Now, we've had some great mock trials, we've had some average mock trials, we've had some, some kids that wanted to dress up. I think you can kind of see some of the kids you know in that picture where they're still in high school, I pulled one from years ago. I record it, the kids have fun with it, I play the judge and they get to play the. And they get to play the lawyers, we do not do, we do a semi-scripted mock trial, I don't tell them what to say, they have about two weeks to research it on their own. Um, I asked for volunteers, I've never had a lack of volunteers to be lawyers, um, and it is a lot of work. And the kids very much enjoy it, those are some of the topics we cover in Law and Justice, uh, we usually round out with financial literacy and, um. Year, year in and year out, the kids ask, how does that have to do with? Law and Justice, well. Uh, when I first started, I kind of asked that myself, but I thought, what a better way to, um. To cover financial literacy in a class that's an elective, that really has to do with some of that, you know, credit law. With, um, with, with bank loans and how you can, um, do some of that, we cover civil law, one of the kids, we've had everything covered from, um. Uh, OJ's civil trial to just about everything. Um, I really enjoy, we talked some local cases, not just particularly with, um, civil law, but in trial court. One of the ones that we, I really enjoy talking about is Gordon Call, if you know who Gordon Call is, we talk about that quite a bit and how. It, it's not just the, what we see, a lot, most kids don't know about Gordon Call, but. Not just about what you see on the surface, the background and the agricultural background and the anti-government background that, that builds up to that case. Um, you can flip it, Anna. Um, so I flip over to North Dakota Studies, um, this is like, uh, like, this is my first year teaching this. I put some assignment examples and it's a little hard to see. But two of my favorite assignments, because one deals with one of my favorite standards, that's on the left. And it allows the kids to connect an early political movement to a grassroots, modern political movement, and I had kids connect to. Um, we, we talked about the progressive era, we talked about the Farmers Alliance, we talked about, uh, a populist movement, which is the farmers. Part of the Farmers Alliance in the early or the late eighteen hundreds. Um. And we connected it to things like the Green Party, we had kids connecting it to, uh, I have one student connected to, uh, grassroots movement of Black Lives Matter. Um, it was, it was a really neat assignment to read over for, uh, when, when the kids are all said and done, and one of the coolest assignments we're doing. I thought of it early, um, as we're doing a North Dakota Interest Project and it's really personal to them. Um, I let the kids pick the standards they want to connect to. Um, I let the kids really, the only stipulation I had is it has to be something from North Dakota. Um, I put some suggestions on there. Um, one of the suggestions, I had a, a group run with it and there's, it's still ongoing, the due date is March tenth. I let them have the extension, um, what they're doing. Is, um, they're doing the history of volleyball at Oak's Public School. And they started and they had all the records, I think they set up to like two thousand and one and then it got a little, maybe it was two thousand and ten, I don't remember, but it got a little messy. So now what they're doing is they're talking to Robin and they're also co, uh, cross-referencing some yearbooks. And they're slowly, every day that we have an opportunity to work on that project, they're going to the library, looking through the yearbooks. And building that, um, I had a young lady do, um, some of the history of the Angry Beaver. Um, interviewing some of the people and she made a big poster and I encouraged her to give it to Sean and, 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 and show him and maybe he can display it. I have a group doing, um, North Dakota Football or Oaks Football, um, from, and I think they narrowed the, the, the driver down to. I think two thousand, I think it was when Mr. Dope had started coaching to now is where they're at now with that, I have a group that did North Dakota Ghost Towns. Um, and they worked in some actual ghosts in that presentation, so it's kind of cool. We've watched some, I've watched some of it, they've tended to check in with me periodically, um, they, they've had some, it's been some really enjoyable projects, the kids that have worked hard on it. Um, it's been really neat to watch them be really super interested in that, you can flip the sliding. Now, I don't have a lot of pictures from one of my new classes I all, uh, I teach here, um. Years ago, up, really up until last year, we found a leadership class, or I taught a leadership class, um, to high schoolers. And we, the, the numbers in the high score are kind of leaning in that leadership class, because kids would take it as seniors. But there wasn't a lot of seniors that could take it, once we, um, converted back to our bell schedule, it really restricted who could take it. So I was in like, I would have three kids, I would have four kids and, um. Uh, once Mr. Spellerberg left, we were co-teaching that and once he left it, it, we just, the numbers weren't there once we went back to that bell schedule, so. Last year we had a meeting, um, late in the year. And Mr. Beta wanted to give some options to choir and band kids and make it basically an elective for our junior high. And I sat there quite silent for a long time and he goes, well, do you want a study hall and I. Pause for a little bit and I took a big breath and I go. I think it'd be a great idea to move our leadership class into the junior high. Um, and it's been a work in progress, I, I can say that, uh, you can, this is, this is an early picture, oh, you're fine. That's an early picture for some of the things we did in leadership class. Um, that's some of the groups, I think I had a lot of pictures from this group, so I pulled some of them. Um, we, we've, uh, I have twenty-one kids in the class, um, it's a semi-mix of seventh and eighth graders. I think I only have two seventh graders in the class right now and all the rest are eighth grade. Um, I think I have two ladies in the class and nineteen boys. Um, it is, um, like I said, um, a work in progress, we have, uh, some topics we've covered, what we center around really in second semester. The HOM is our habits of mind, um, probably the one we've spent the most time on is impulse control. Um, we have, um, some, we have some kids in the junior high that struggle with impulse control, all of junior high really struggled with impulse control. Um, and we talked about where that can lead you. Um, we, uh, right now, yesterday, we started talking about taking responsible risk and one of their. Things they love to talk about is snowmobiling, they love the snowmobile, so we talked about would adding a helmet lessen the risk? If you were going on your snowmobile, um, that's as far as we've got there, um. They've really enjoyed the financial literacy piece we've also talked about, I pulled from so many different places. This is another class that I go, yep, I'll, I'll take it on, um, really with, um, not a whole lot of idea when I took it on of resources. Uh, really just curriculum and learning, uh, you know, a lot of it's learning as I go. Um, one of the cool things they did is they did some interest projects, one kid got to show me or got to show us how to do a double leg. I'm not a wrestler, so I got to learn all about that, um, and then we talked a lot first semester about, um, study skills. So it, like I said, um, I hope it, I hope it gets to the level of Law and Justice where Law and Justice is in year six. Both North Dakota Studies and Life Skills are in basically year one, so that class right there is five days a week. Um, so I teach it every single day to twenty-one, seventh and eighth graders. Um, you can click, I think this, no, here's the video, um, this was an activity we did at our PCL, PCBL convening, um. And I don't remember the name of the activity, but basically the kids stand in the circle. And if the, the person in the circle goes, I think one of them says, I like turtles. And they raise their hand if they like turtles and they got to switch position, if one is left out, they stay in the circle and they got to say something they like, it's kind of a relationship, get to know you type piece. Um, we did it earlier in the year, I think, in the PCBL, now you'll notice these kids have a lot more energy than the adults when we did it, so, um, you can play that, Anna.
Go, Matthias. Don't, don't hurt each other. What do you got, Chris?
So that's just a little example, that's the real personal part of it, those kids, especially if you can get all those boys. Running around a little bit, if, to calm them down takes a little bit and that's a whole nother piece. That would be it, if you guys have any questions.
So, to keep in the spirit of our, uh, our new goals and to put you on the spot, how, how will? What you presented to us today help us to achieve our goals of increasing our. Scores on North Dakota Studies in the, um, ELA and becoming choice ready?
So one of the things you thought, or one of the things, if you go to Choice Ready, I mean, I'm bringing in speakers, especially in Law and Justice, um. I mean, we had, I think, six speakers this year, so the kids are seeing different careers they are going to. Um, I think every career that I showed would be a, um, something you would have to go to school for, um. And then the writing piece that you talked about, um, one of the things we do. And, um, especially in my high school classes, is my kids get to do, they get to use their notes that they take on their test. But the questions are, um, higher level critical thinking type, social studies skills questions, so. They are writing, and I'm judging that piece, so they're, they're writing quite a bit, the last test they took in, um. Uh, North Dakota Studies was almost a full hour of testing, um, and it was mostly writing.
Thank you, and I, I jotted down something that I, I thought was very interesting, as you said, that one of my favorite standards, and I just never thought about teachers having a favorite standard.
Absolutely, that is one of my favorites is when you can connect, and I think that's social studies, you, one of the standards is if you can connect something to modern day and really. That's, that's when we talk about standards-based grading, that's a level four right there, where, um, you can connect. This era to this, and, and I try to ask some of my questions in that way, not every question. Um, to contradict what Anna said a little bit, one of the things I said was, um, I, I get a lot of feedback, especially from my. Softwares, because they like to talk and they like to give me feedback, some of it's not always great, some of it's good, some of it's bad. But they tell me, they, uh, one of the best feedbacks I got was from a young lady and said, you know, Mr. Peterson. Um, you're teaching this class and we've had North Dakota Studies and we've had our, but we haven't had Law and Justice. Some of these things you're talking about, like one of the words was a referendum, we're not sure what that means, can you make sure you include vocab? In our, if, if we're doing a full group session of notes? And I said, you know what, I never thought about that, and I go, absolutely, so right now, one thing we do, if we have a lot of vocab, is I'll put a beginning slider, uh. Um, of beginning video, I video all my less, or all my, my notes and my lessons. Um, at the beginning of my video, I put a, a vocab section for them of anything I think they might, um, need. And, and I know I've gotten really good feedback from the kids on that and they, like I said, we get, I get feedback from, especially in North Dakota Studies. I get feedback from my kids all the time, so.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, that brings us to new business, do we have any, no, nothing listed there, so. Items for our future agenda, we've already brought up the, uh, financial audits. Next regular meeting is Tuesday, April the eleventh, and then Tuesday, main night, reminder, um. Full board election, the announcements have gone out, it's in the paper and that's in on the website, Sheila. You, I was, you have told me you are intending to put one again, Robert?
I will not be seeking reelection, so anybody in the rural district would like to run, uh, spot is available.
And that is at large, right? Okay. Okay, so be it known and thank you both for letting us know, because, um, it's important, I think, that people. Step up and get their names on the ballot, sometimes you can get elected without having your name on the ballot, it happens sometimes, so, but, uh. Yes, true, that one, not sitting well, but, um, and, uh, the deadline to, so, so to get your name on the ballot. Is to simply complete, uh, uh, an affidavit of candidacy, I believe. I didn't review this, but you don't need to go out and get any signatures, you just fill out a paper and bring it here to school and get it to the business manager, it's available on. And is available on the website, so thank you for that. Um, and with that, is there anything else for the good of the order?
No, I do have a question about our meeting dates, though, so as we progress in our new way and. Are we going to possibly need to move them back a week to give?
We did, we did talk about that, I think, um, I think for the, for the remainder of this whole year, we will, we will keep staying on this. Second Tuesday, and we, we can change those if necessary, but I think as we get into summer. Uh, and the board reorganization and, uh, board retreats, we'll dive a little deeper into the. The expectations of when, you know, when the board package should go out, how we should respond to that and then. Um, I think we will probably not to move that later. Anything else? If not, I'll declare this meeting adjourned at eight twenty-one a.m.